Alright, so I was kind of attending to the more of an informal. You guys are facing a barrage of scripted questions and panels and things along those lines. I wanted to have a chance to meet the community and answer some of the questions that are coming out. We're going to be more Delridge focused perhaps, but I imagine we'll go into some larger city issues. My intention was that a question would be posed and then you guys would have an opportunity to, first one, then the other one answering the same question. We just alternate, so we could do a coin toss or whatever. And that would be first, or my second, or my first, or my second, and so on. Is that right on?
Sure.
Okay. Does anyone want to lead with a question? Me!
Actually, if you guys could just give a brief synopsis of who you are and stuff, because I kind of have a little bit of an idea but not complete. If maybe they could do that real quick?
Yeah, me too.
We have consensus. So the first question is, please tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm going to go first. Oh, go first, okay. So thanks for having us. This is the second time I've been able to come to this room in the last few months here. Thanks for doing this before the primary. Really honored to be in this race. We had eight really qualified candidates in the primary. I was able to get about a third of the vote, which I feel good about. I hope to earn your vote, I hope to earn your support as we go to the general. You may remember me saying that I've lived in Seattle, grew up around this area, worked at C Mar, Community Health Centers just down the hill, would come up to Delridge for lunch often when I worked at C Mar. Had a lot of friends who worked at C Mar who were living in this area, and that was about 15 years ago, when a salary at C Mar, you could think about buying your first house and getting your feet off the ground. Too bad I didn't buy 15 years ago, or even three years ago. I'm a renter, and we just got married a month and a half ago, and we've been looking at this neighborhood, looking at our community. I've lived all the way from, you know, Finney Ridge to West Seattle, U District, and various places throughout Seattle my entire adult life. And we would love to buy in the city. Part of the reason that I'm running is, I feel like folks like me, I'm solidly, I feel like lucky to be in the middle income, lucky to be able to have a good living wage job, me and my husband, he's a reporter, so you know, he's not making a ton of money, but he and I should be doing pretty well. And in the city of Seattle, a lot of us are getting priced out, a lot of us are getting pushed out, and homeowners every day are getting knocks on their door asking people to move. So I would like to see a Seattle where those of us who live here and work here can afford to stay here, those of us who retired here can afford to live in our communities, and that we create the housing that we need to make sure that the folks who are here and the folks who are coming have enough of a place to live and a thriving community. I still play soccer, I play soccer in this area often, and we need not just homes, not just good living wage jobs and retirement security, but truly connected and thriving communities. My background's in public health, and I know you were talking earlier about walkable neighborhoods. I've worked at Department of Health and Children's Alliance on walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, neighborhoods that are safe for those who are walking with their dog, or those who are walking with their stroller, or walking with their walker. I'd like to see more connected communities that actually have sidewalks, street lamps, basic infrastructure. I think you were talking about drainage systems. Just trying to get here today on a day that's rained a lot, I hydroplaned twice just coming here. Our infrastructure is not meeting our city needs. So those are some of the things that I've been trying to bring up on the campaign trail. I currently work right now at the Washington State Labor Council, AFL-CIO, still working full-time. Starting next week, I'm going to try to take some time off the last two weeks to the election, but my day-to-day job is fighting to make sure that everybody can actually punch their way into the middle income. And right now, there's far too many people who can't get that middle-income job, can't get that first home, and don't have retirement security. I think we can do that in Seattle. There's a lot of prosperity, but we need more shared prosperity.
Hi. How y'all doing?
Good.
Tricia and I just came from a forum, so we're still geared up and ready to go. So thanks for having us here. Just a little bit about me, I'm the former executive director of the Tenant Union of Washington State. It's a housing advocacy organization, and before that I worked at Solid Ground, focusing mostly on homelessness and housing issues. So that work has very much informed my worldview. While I have been doing that work, I've been essentially a community organizer on the outside of City Hall looking at it. And it's been many, many, many points of frustration, as I've seen our city not side with the community, not side with families that are being displaced, and prioritizing profit through development and through speculative sales of properties and rent hikes and everything else, when we know the city can do better, the city can do more. Through some strange circumstance, I found myself as one of the members on the Mayor's Hala Committee. And they needed their token community representative. I was the head of the Tenant Union, they wanted the tenant voice there. Well, I don't think that they really appreciated what we had in store for them. We went through a 10-month process over the Hala proposals, and the grant bargain, which upzoned the entire city in exchange for very little affordable housing, I thought was unjust. And I was the one member on the 28th panel that abstained on the vote. And I wanted to create a space where the community could have a conversation about what would it look like if we had had a grant bargain for the community and not a grant bargain for the developers. And I actually held a press conference the same day, actually just downstairs from the Mayor's press conference announcing his grant proposal for Seattle for affordable housing. I think you all are very familiar with Hala. You know, this is a proposal that requires as little as 2% of each building to be affordable in exchange for these upzones. I feel like that's highway robbery. And as a person who's an affordable housing advocate, I've made it my career, my life's work, to push the agenda in Seattle to demand for more. We've put forward a proposal calling for 25% affordability requirements. If they're going to be upzoning our neighborhoods, I think that we should be getting something in return for that. You know, I'm really honored to be endorsed by District One Councilmember Lisa Herbl, former councilmember Nick LaCotta, who was also my mentor, and also been endorsed now by The Seattle Times, The Stranger, and The Seattle Weekly. So we have a lot of momentum with this campaign. We're going to be knocking on 50,000 doors. That's a lot of conversations in our communities, because that's what this is about. It's about bringing neighborhoods together. It's about grassroots organizing. It's about being accountable to the folks that know what's best for their communities when we see this kind of centralized decision-making happening at City Hall that is driving displacement, driving unaffordability, and allowing development being done to you than with you. So that's what my campaign is about. I'm really looking forward to hearing your questions, and I really like this relaxed format, so thank you so much for putting it together.
So I'd like to talk about homelessness, which is a huge issue. So we're the city of spending unbelievable amount of money. Do you think that we're wisely spending that money? Because I see, on my way to work in the morning, I take the Lower Bridge to get off the peninsula, and the city has swept all the tents out from under the bridge, and they're now putting up a 15-foot-high, it seems like, mesh fence. And to me, seems like if we could have taken that money that's being invested in that fence to fence people out to better use. And I'm just curious, do you think that we are wisely spending the, almost, I think in the new budget, it's almost $73 million on homeless services?
I can take that. So, this is a big disagreement between myself and actually former Mayor Ed Murray and now current Mayor Tim Burgess. There's a plan by the city to spend millions and millions of dollars on what are called rapid rehousing programs. And I used to work at Solid Ground. This is an agency that has a whole housing department that provides rental assistance, homelessness assistance, all that kind of stuff. And what we've seen in rapid rehousing programs is that they take a homeless family, they put them in a market rate unit, so that could be like $2,000, $3,000 a month. They provide a shallow subsidy, so it stabilizes them for a little bit. And then between nine and, you know, 12 months later, they phase the subsidy out, and then that family has to pay market rate rent. Now, this program has worked in other cities like Salt Lake City, where the rents are quite a bit lower than Seattle, so they've had some success there. But in high-rent cities, the effect of this policy is essentially to spend like millions and millions of dollars to either move people out of the city where the rents are higher, which is essentially subsidizing displacement, or setting people up to fail in a market rate unit in our city. So to answer your question, no, I would actually like to revamp, to the tune of, you know, tens of millions of dollars, how we're spending our money. And if you remember when the jungle got swept, we could never get more money for homelessness in the state budget, but they were able to get a million dollars for a fence, right? And I completely agree with you. And so the city is spending also millions of dollars on the sweeps themselves, which just moves people from one corner to the next. I think my opponent are actually in agreement about opposing the sweeps. I don't think there's a lot of difference there. Where I do think that there is a big difference is the long-term vision of what we want to do about our homeless crisis. And I have put forward a proposal that would actually raise the corporate tax rate on very large companies while at the same time providing small businesses a tax break up to two-thirds of businesses. And what it would do is that it would bring in $160 million to go towards building deeply affordable housing. If we succeed, we could actually build 5,000 units of homeless housing in five years. That would effectively end unsheltered homelessness in our city. There's about 4,000 people to sleep out there every night that are completely unsheltered. My opponent doesn't support this proposal. She thinks that it'll take too long, that it's unworkable. She can tell you the reasons she doesn't like it. I think that we absolutely have to do it, because I've been a housing affordably advocate my entire life. And what I have to say to you is that if a politician comes to you and says, "We want to solve homelessness, we want to build housing," if they're not telling you how they're going to pay for it, they're selling you a false bill of goods. And we cannot keep relying on property taxes to pay for it. People are getting priced out of their homes. So this is a way for corporations to pay their fair share. We have raised the corporate tax rate in 20 years, so I think this is the way we should go.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you for asking that question. My background's in public health. I've worked on making sure that folks have access not to just health insurance, but actually affordable housing, stable housing. We know that a health insurance card is only 10% of what makes somebody healthy, right? And when I saw folks at C Mar, and we talked to the working families when I worked at the Children's Alliance, we tried to make sure everybody had access to affordable insurance, but the reality is unless they had stable and accessible housing, their health is going to continue to deteriorate. So this is a passion of mine that I've been working on for 15 years. The issues that I have brought to this race have been to look at homelessness as a comprehensive intersectional issue. We have folks who are homeless who are working. They just don't have affordable housing throughout the city. We have folks who are homeless who have mental health issues, and they need additional counseling, not just a room. When we give folks a room, lots of times what you hear from homelessness advocates is that they keep their stuff packed into a bag. Some of them still sleep by the door because they've been through so much trauma, especially many of our folks who are chronically homeless. So what I'd like to do is create enough permanent supportive housing for folks so that they have case management services and mental health counseling, so that they have that room, they feel safe, but they also have the ability to get back up on their feet. That's going to require us to look at building an additional permanent supportive housing and creating the ability for folks to get inside quickly. Today was a really bad weather day, right? It's the worst we've seen in a few weeks here. We had a really good summer. But I grew up in this region, and I remember last winter, it snowed every other week. It's not something that we're used to in the Pacific Northwest here, and I think that we have to expect this is going to be a really bad winter as well. One of the things that I've been saying is we've got to create these low-barrier facilities so that people, if they have mental health issues, if they have substance abuse issues, we create a place for them to be able to come inside. You mentioned some of the encampments, some of the sanctioned encampments. Those are good for short-term measures. We really got to create the ability for folks to get inside though so that we're not sweeping them from corner to corner. And one of the big differences between us, and John mentioned his endorsement from, you know, kind of polar opposites, Seattle Times and The Stranger, it's because, you know, frankly, he's saying different things to different audiences. He sat there with his arms folded and nodded, as the Seattle Times Senatorial Board said that there was enough housing in the city and that there was enough places for homeless folks to go. And I told him, "I'm not going to say something to you today that's different than I say to community every day. We don't have enough housing in this community. We've got to create a much more systemic way to get folks inside." Seattle Times didn't like it when I said, "We have to recognize that there's going to be chaos starting in December." I'm absolutely in support of making sure that we create greater accountability measures, that we're figuring out how the homeless folks are going to be better served so that people aren't churning out into the street or getting services from one place to another. We have to figure out how we holistically help people, but I'm not going to tell you that there's enough services right now or enough housing, because there's not. And they said, "Well, it sounds like you want to defend the status quo." And I said, "That's not what I said." What I'm saying is, RFPs are going to be awarded in December. New contracts are going out December and in January. And we, as a city, we have to take responsibility for educating folks about where they can get new services. As we streamline things, as we create greater efficiencies, there's going to be a lot of people who are confused. They're going to be used to going to one place to get services. Folks are going to be used to having the doors thrown open. We've got to figure out how we get folks to the right service at the right time and make sure that that health service complements the housing services. So I have the endorsement of the current director of the Solid Ground organization, the former director. I have former folks who've worked at the Tenant Union in the past, as well as board members and staffers. I'm the only one in this race who has housing advocates from, for example, the Washington Housing Action Alliance, who know that I am interested in getting enough affordable housing for those who are homeless and getting them housed now and getting the health services that they need. The reason that I, you know, regrettably don't think that the tax on corporations is going to give us the dollars that we need right now, I'm not saying that I'm not, I come from the Labor Council. I have sued the large business corporations when they tried to say that minimum wage and sick leave wouldn't work. I've sued the large corporations when they tried to spray farmers with pesticide drift. I'm used to going up against big corporations. I was the only person on the Exchange Board, if you remember the Obamacare Exchange Board, the only person to vote no to give the CEO a raise when they wanted to give a raise before the website even went live. I'm used to taking tough votes. I'm used to pushing for bold proposals. The reason that I'm not saying that this is going to equal the dollars we need now is because I'm worried about the delay effect. So the way that I think we get dollars in hand to fund housing now is bonding against existing MHA, or existing housing levy dollars, bonding against future MHA dollars that are already being collected. And frankly, look at how we get money from escrow, at the point of escrow, with these luxury sales that are happening. Now, that's not a single solution, that's not one number, that's not saying, you know, tax Amazon. That is saying, get the dollars that we need in hand now, and yes, look at long-term solutions, but I want to create that housing needed right now, today, and that's why I have the support that I have from folks who are working with the homeless population.
Shall I make it interesting, and can I respond to a couple threads on that?
Oh, oh, I'm seeing, it's...
What's that followed with it? It's late, come on.
Teresa, are you okay with the back and forth? So if you respond, Teresa, you can counter, is that...
I think that's fine. I also would love to talk about some of the other issues, because a lot of this race has been focused on like that one issue. I see the intersectionality, so I think I'll respond.
Okay, yeah, because we've got all the...
I'll be concise.
All right, do it, concisely, go.
All right, so let's talk about this. Well, first of all, let's talk about, you know, me being inconsistent with my audiences. If you read the Seattle Times endorsement, The Stranger, and The Weekly, you'll all see that they're saying the same thing. The reason that I got endorsed is because I'm independent from all of those interest groups. And if you want to talk about where labor was at on Hala, they were at the table too. They agreed to the grant bargain. And there is plenty of footage of Nicole Grant, who's the Secretary General of the King County Labor Council, who endorsed my opponent, testifying in favor of Hala. Like, no improvements, just like, "This is what we want, we don't want anymore." And that's because there is a collusion between labor leadership and downtown developers in advancing that agenda, and I think that that is a problem. That's why I got the endorsement of The Seattle Times, that's why I got the endorsement of The Stranger and The Seattle Weekly. My opponent is talking about a bond. A bond is a loan. That means using debt to build housing. That bill's going to have to come up at some point, and she's bonding against the Seattle Housing Levy, an existing funding source, it's not a new funding source, that is born from, that is paid off through property taxes, yet another aggressive tax. This is the wrong direction. My proposal is a new revenue source that would bring in $160 million a year. It would be hard to do it. It would mean going up against the Chamber of Commerce and the business interests. I do not have a problem doing that. And I've been extremely consistent in saying that to every single community. And if you read those endorsements, that's exactly what they say.
All right, I'll be concise. And this is not, this is not something that's a game, right? This isn't for entertainment value. I've never thought about running for office. In fact, for the last three years, I've been encouraging people to see themselves running for office, workers, communities of color, women, and I've been like, "Have you ever thought about it?" And now here I am, after years of people saying, "Why aren't you doing this?" I'm like, "Oh, wow, this is what we need to prepare folks for." So I will be a better advocate for how we prepare folks to talk about the issues. And the reality is, bonding now when we have a boom is a smart financial thing to do. We have the most cranes in our city. We have to create the housing we need now, not the housing we wish we would have built 10 years from now. We've got to create it now and hold those developers accountable. I have held folks accountable that I might not see eye to eye with, to create the housing we need. That's what I'm doing right now on the old Pacman Tower, you know, the Pacman Tower? The beautiful old building that used to be Amazon? Remember that one? Okay. On the north end of the lot there, it's an empty parking lot. I am working with the board there to actually hold folks accountable, to develop the housing we need, make some become housing, with a senior assisted living facility, with a childcare facility, with a health clinic around a plaza. That's what it looks like to actually, I think, hold people accountable, but not say that you're not going to, you know, that you're going to walk away from the table or you're not going to work with people. We need to create what our community needs in terms of infrastructure, human services, you talked about human services for the homeless. We can't just be erecting fences and keeping people out, we have to actually create a place for folks to have services. And I'm absolutely proud to have the endorsement that I have from the Labor Council, as well as small businesses. These are organizations and unions that John saw the endorsement from and didn't get, frankly. We have to work with not just folks who build buildings, but our teachers, our firefighters, all of the folks that the Labor Council endorses or works with, they've endorsed me. There's no collusion here. I'll end by saying this, because it's really about how we find solutions. John's called out the work of, let's see, the Convention Center, right? And the Convention Center is being built by labor folks who held that developer accountable and said, "We will not agree to work with you unless you create affordable housing, create community benefits agreements, that we have priority hire programs so that low and middle-income folks, communities of color, can actually get jobs there, that we respect the hotel workers who are going to benefit in the region, but most importantly, that we created the infrastructure and the housing onsite." That's what it looks like, I think, to create conditions set by community that meets our needs. That's what it looks like to address the needs in this climate where we're not going to have funding from the feds, right? We're not going to have support per se from state capital. We don't even have a capital budget out of our own state legislature right now. I'm working on winning the 45th too, so that we have Manca Dinger in the 45th, so we can take back the Senate and get things like funding for infrastructure and capital projects. But, you know, I just want to be really clear that I'm proud of those endorsements. That doesn't mean that there's collusion. I'm absolutely not in the pocket of any developers, which is also what The Stranger said. And I take this really seriously.
Thank you.
Can I ask about property tax? You guys brought that up, and it's going up so quickly, so I'd like to know what your response is for people who are actually in homes. And I can't tell you what went up the past two years, and it's just ridiculous. I live in other areas, and there is usually a cap of how quickly your property tax can go up so that you don't have somebody who thinks they have a mortgage of, let's say, $2,000, because you brought that up. And now, in two years, it's $2,500 because of the taxes.
I'm happy to answer that, unless you want to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, taxes. So we, I can't tell you how many times, we've knocked on so many doors. And you knock on a door and you talk to somebody who's lived there for 20 years. And I talked to one man, he was, he moved in, his house is in the 70s, when he moved in, he paid $700 for his property taxes. He pays $7,000 now. And, you know, he told me, like, he literally doesn't pay for his, like, medication as a senior citizen so that he can pay his property taxes. And his house is paid off. And I think that, you know, for me, it's not like there is a, you know, this levy fatigue is what they call it. I think it's been an abuse of power by the city. Because, let me give you another example. So we had the Move Seattle Levy. It was a $930 million levy, it was close to a billion dollars. Now, I don't know if y'all recall this, but my personal hero, Nick LaCotta, when he was on the council, put forward a proposal to reduce that property sales tax by about $300 million, and he was going to backfill it with a commercial property tax, so the private sector would pay its fair share. That got voted down. That didn't happen. At the time, the council members who voted against it said, "Oh, we want to reserve that property," excuse me, "that taxing authority, you know, for later, for later use." Well, it's still, that was how many years ago? We still haven't seen that got brought back. That meant that all of you had to backfill and pay for that. Now, why was it a billion dollars to begin with? They talk about all the backlog, the maintenance that they had to do for our infrastructure and our roads and things like that. Well, we don't have impact fees. We haven't had impact fees for, well, since forever, when every other city in the Puget Sound region has them. And we crunch the numbers, I mean, we've given up hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue by not having impact fees during our boom and bust cycles. And that means that, at the end of the day, you all, as homeowners, will pay for it, right? I've made a promise to every community that I go into that we will pass a strong impact fee legislation, 5% to 10% on all new development, in my first year in office. Because we can't keep waiting, like, the boom isn't going to last forever, and then there'll be a low period, and then there'll be another boom. But we can't just keep leaving money on the table like this, because eventually, someone's got to pay the bill. And I think it should be the private sector that's paying its fair share. And again, the reason, the reason that this is so hard to do, it's so hard to get impact fees, is because developers don't want to pay them, and they are the ones that call the shots at City Hall. And that's a problem. So my real short answer to you is, we need more progressive revenue sources. We need impact fees, we need to raise taxes on corporations, and the private sector needs to pay its fair share. Otherwise, you all.
How about halting the increases? Are you going to do it somehow?
I think that before we propose any more levies, we absolutely have to increase corporate taxation and impact fees before, we have to go to the private sector. My answer to you is, we have to go back to the private sector first before we go back to the public.
So I'm going to give you some short-term solutions that I think also help alleviate the pressure on many of our homeowners. And also, as a renter, it's impacting my rent too, right? Because it gets passed on. My rent's gone up by now $300 in the last two years. That's, you know, most families, most low-income families would not be able to sustain that. We started looking to buy because of that, and at the same time, the prices of homes continue to go up, and the property taxes for those who are already homeowners is crippling. So as you heard, you know, we know, as you mentioned, we know that property taxes sometimes now outweigh or are higher in terms of the cost out of pocket for homeowners than it is for an actual mortgage. There's three things that I want to do immediately. Number one is, the city has a program for seniors, a senior income tax credit for homeowners. We should be rapidly figuring out how we can get that money out the door so that seniors can actually stay in their homes. There's a low-income tax credit as well for homeowners who bought their home maybe five, 10 years ago, and now the cost of actually being able to stay in that home is daunting. We want to be able to create equity, and when I say equity, I mean equity in terms of financial equity, but also equity in terms of racial, socioeconomic equity, so that more homeowners can afford to stay in their home and not get pushed out. The other thing that I think we can do to help homeowners is better weatherization programs. We're hearing a lot of folks who own their homes right now who maybe need new windows because it's a single pane, maybe the roof needs to be replaced, and they're getting knocks on their door from developers who want to just buy it and tear it down. I'd like to see us use that weatherization program that the city has and actually allow for folks to stay in their home, not feel the pressure to sell and have to get out of the city, improve the energy efficiency of those homes with the condition that folks stay there. I think that helps people maintain their home and also doesn't exactly pressure you to move out. And then, lastly, sort of in terms of bigger picture revenue reform, I've been working on fighting Olympia for rightsizing up our upside-down tax system. I'd like to see a tax on capital gains. There's a lot of really wealthy people in our state and in our region, and we have the most regressive tax system in the country. Thank you, Tim Imman, that is a disaster that he passed and shoved throughout the ballot, and it's really restricted the type of revenue we can get in. I'd like to see us do a tax on capital gains, because people are making a lot of wealth right now, trading stocks and bonds on the market. That's revenue we could be getting for our region here, so I'll push at the state level, but more locally, I'd like to see a Seattle-King County capital gains tax. And as we do that, alleviate tax on sales tax, on property owners, and on BNO for our smallest businesses.
I have a question. There's, so there's a couple of terms which keep coming up in conversation. I'm going a different direction.
All right.
Couple of terms that keep coming up in conversations, community and neighborhoods, okay? And depending on who you ask or who you talk to, community and neighborhoods, doesn't mean, we all used to agree on what that meant, and we're losing that. We're becoming a disassociative society, where we have, you know, phones, we stay inside, we watch Netflix, and, you know, we move around more sporadically. These changes happen. My impression of Seattle, I've lived here since 1973, right? So I have watched this city over decades. And even, even, you know, when I was a teenager and not actually paying attention to these things, I would describe to people from out of town, Seattle is a collection of different distinct neighborhoods, different distinct areas, right? And they're all kind of mushed together into this one city, and it works, it's beautiful, but, you know, they're all so different from each other, you know, that was the descriptor that I used even then. The city recognized this in 1988, founded the Department of Neighborhoods, and for a while, it was awesome. You know, great things were being done. I wasn't, I wasn't engaged at that time, but, you know, I'm, there's still the legends of the early days, when hundreds of people from around the city would, as citizens and volunteers, come and participate in the budgeting process. And there was tremendous realized value from the city's investment into acknowledging the neighborhood structure that we were. Fast forward to, I don't know, last year, when the, the, let's, I'm getting ahead of myself. Over the years, the Department of Neighborhoods, a couple of things happened to it. One, it became an amalgam, where if you didn't know where a department went, you shoved it in there, right? So the Department of Neighborhoods actually became like seven different things, many of which didn't have anything to do with neighborhoods at all. Weird Buildings is part of the Department of Neighborhoods. It's got a more, that's got a better name, but Weird Buildings is how I think of it. And, what's that?
Historic.
Historic Buildings, which, I think of the-
The Amazon Sears.
The Denny, the Denny Building, that's no longer there anymore. Denny's, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The Weird Building Department. So it lost some of its vision, and it also started losing funding. They cut the most important part of that department over and over and over again, in successive years. People, Yun, I think you have a different job title now, but Yun was one of the community coordinators that worked for the Department of Neighborhoods, and they used to have, they used to have a lot more of them. And our argument was, you need even more, you don't have enough now. And so they started diminishing the budget, diminishing the budget, diminishing the budget. And unsurprisingly, the structure that was built and established started to, fail is maybe the wrong word, it may be too strong, but it started to not perform, or started to have diminished performance. At the same time, there started a dialogue, which was really us and them, right? And that is fully solidified now, it's either us or them. And you're either, "Community!" right? And that's your jam? Or you're like, "Those neighborhood councils, they stink, I hate them." Right? It's one of the two. There's no middle ground anymore. And so, you know, having seen both sides, and having grown up in this town, having watched it evolve, where we're at right now makes me sad. And I'm kinda curious, both what your vision is for attracting and retaining the neighborhood that Seattle is, is in large, and the city department that is intended to serve it. What are your thoughts, and what's your vision for how that goes forward? Sorry, that took a long time.
No, that's, okay. So I think one of the most surprising things in this race, given that I've been encouraging people to run for office, and I feel like I have a pulse on Seattle, the communities, politics, state level as well, the most surprising thing has been sort of the labels and the camps that people get put into. Because I absolutely wanna make sure that people can afford to live in the city, and that they can keep their home, and that they can walk to school, and that we create bike lanes, and that we create enough tree canopies, and that we create enough buildings for those who want to sell their goods on this small square footage, to be able to afford to live here, and to create two and three bedrooms, so that families can afford to live in the city as well, in these new buildings. All of those things, I think, are not counterintuitive, right? But I think that there's people who want different things within there, and so a lot of times, people are like, you're either in this camp or you're in this camp. You're either with the developers, or you're with the neighbors, you're either with the businesses, or you're with the workers. And I'm like, you can be both, right? You can want development done right in our community, and you can want workers to thrive and have good opportunities for people to start their own businesses. And I feel like I'm really interested in breaking down those labels and camps, and when it comes to neighborhood voices, that's part of the kind of camps that I hope that we can break apart. People who are participating in neighborhood conversations want to have their voice heard. People are, you know, I think tired of having decisions made in City Hall, and then being introduced to community. Instead, ideas should come from community, and then work their way into policy, and then we should all have a say in the final product. And when it comes to changes in our neighborhood, I think that the biggest thing that I hear from community is that they wanna have an ability to have their voice heard. So I've been calling for three things. Number one is, I would like for us to actually, as a budget, invest in allowing people to be able to have transportation reimbursement if we need it, either to get to City Hall or to get to forums like this. Childcare systems, if people have kiddo and having that kid, and the lack of affordable childcare is an impediment to having a more robust conversation, then we think about reimbursement for those folks. And for wage replacement, if we're looking to create more diversity in terms of who gets a say in our conversations, maybe there's a way to incentivize more people to participate in those conversations. Having more meetings and hearings at night is a way that I think we can do it. And doing that not just in City Hall, but in forums like this, right? I think that as we think about change, there's a lot of fear that is rightfully generated when our voices don't feel like they've had an ear to fall on. And our neighborhoods and our homes, it's not just a matter of where we live and the street that we're on, it's our identity, right? And so trying to figure out a way for folks to make sure that their voice is heard is something I'm really interested in doing. And I agree with the goals, that we need to create a more accessible opportunity for people to have their voice heard. And as you said, as I said earlier, I'm a renter, I don't wanna be a renter the rest of my life, I would like to own one day. Figuring out how we get more diversity, both socioeconomic status, racial and ethnic inclusion, age spectrum, these are all good goals, but we shouldn't be pointing fingers and saying that one person's for or against that. We gotta figure out how to create the processes so that that happens. And I've run really large coalitions in the past, making sure people's voices are heard, and people might not agree in the morning, you know, let's say you might have the hospital and some nurses on the opposite side of the strike line, but by creating coalitions that I think bring people together, we can find common ground solutions.
So, I don't know where to start with this, it's a big question. It was a long question.
Sorry.
No, it was good.
Yours is just a typical Mac.
Yeah. I am, I am all about the preamble. So here's mine. Let me describe a process to you, and you can tell me if it sounds familiar. The city says, gosh, there's 100,000 people moving here in two decades, what do we do? So they put together a stakeholder group, and the mayor, for the most part, city council a little bit, chooses representatives. And that stakeholder group comes up with a plan. And then the plan gets implemented. And then you find out about it. And by the time that you even have a chance to call your city council member, there's already a shovel in the ground. And then the city says, all right, we're ready for your input, right? I mean, that's, that's how planning has worked, at least in the most recent years. That's not how it used to work, right? It used to work more like neighborhood councils would get together. There were geographic idiosyncrasies to every community that the neighborhood councils were aware of. Growth would happen in these neighborhoods, and then the neighborhood council would help inform the city what they knew about their own community, to create that plan for growth, right? So the city can help neighborhood councils, like, set those targets, like, okay, we have to have X amount of density, X amount of units, X amount of affordable housing, sidewalks, et cetera. But the community would kind of help inform that plan before the shovel was in the ground. And that is, I think, what the planning process was back in the day. And I think that it wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't start with Ed Murray, right? It was even earlier, like, I would say it was even Greg Nichols. Where we would see this kind of centralized planning, right? They would create the stakeholder group, and then, and then when you come to the city and say, well, we have these problems, like, if you change the road in this way, we'll create these traffic problems, or whatever, the city would say, well, I don't understand why you're calling us, like, there was already the stakeholder group, they represented you, so we already know. We already, we have your input, thank you, right? I mean, that's, that's the frustration that I hear in neighborhoods, right? And I think that if we are really gonna be serious about it, what we've seen is a really hostile relationship from, you know, the mayor's office and from City Hall to neighborhoods. And you see that evidence by cutting funding for neighborhood groups. And the argument for that was that neighborhood groups are underrepresented by renters, by people of color, et cetera. My argument would be, well, if that's a problem for the neighborhood groups, isn't that more of a statement that you want more resources to them, to do outreach to those communities so that they're more representative? How, I mean, my read on the Ed Murray decision to cut the funding was, developers are really tired of these pesky neighborhood people telling them what to do, and I think that that's really why the funding got cut. And I think that if we're gonna, you know, really talk about, you know, inclusivity and managing growth and all that kind of stuff, my vision, I mean, I described to you the problem, right? My vision for that would be empowering neighborhoods to make decisions for what they know is best for their communities, but having that be a funded process through the city, through the Department of Neighborhoods, so that it's also an inclusive conversation, that everybody, immigrants, refugees, renters, homeowners, everybody who lives in these communities and benefit, and has the opportunity to benefit from growth and benefit from development rather than be harmed by it. Like, that's the vision that we want, that's the kind of community input and neighborhood input that we want. But that we don't get with this current City Hall, because those same powerful interest groups are the ones calling the shots. This is a big point of difference between myself and my opponent. You know, when we talk about Hala as a process, I'm very critical of it, I mean, I didn't vote for it. And the reason was that, well, you've heard my reasons why I thought it was problematic, I think you know. But my opponent has said that she's unwilling to go back to the bargaining table, she's unwilling to go back and revisit Hala. And to me, that's a signal to you about whose interests she's actually gonna serve. I think that if we're gonna be bold and strong on affordability, on managing our growth and development, we need to have an independent voice on the city council who comes from the community that's gonna fight for those interests, fight for our neighborhoods' interests. And that's, I think, the difference between us.
Do you mind if I respond a little bit? Because it's not accurate to say that I'm unwilling to evaluate policy. In fact, what I've said in the entire campaign is, I know the importance of not just passing policy, not just giving a good speech, but being there after the ink is dry to see if something actually works. I want to make sure that this is not the only thing that we look at when it comes to housing. And frankly, 2% to 11%, if I was there, I would have fought for a much higher percentage on Hala. John had his chance, he didn't vote no, he walked away, he abstained. You know, if I was there, I would have fought for a higher threshold. But why I've said that it's important for us to move forward and layer additional ideas is we don't have time. I mean, this is a housing crisis, we know that there's a crisis in our community. I wanna see us hold folks accountable, get as much housing as we can in each of these upzones, have it be reflective of community need, and then layer with additional ideas. I'm talking about community land trust on publicly owned property, public housing options like, think of cohousing, co-ownership models, limited equity options, like we see at Hiwata, where people can actually buy there first place, get their toe in the door. I think that it's important, right now, when we have a boom, that we create the housing that our community needs. And I equate a lot of this to my experience fighting for healthcare as a human right. Like, if I had been in Congress and I had been negotiating the Affordable Care Act, I would have pushed for everybody to be included, for there not to be financial barriers, and for women to have access to reproductive justice, had I been there, right? Just like if I was at Hala, I would have pushed for all of these components that I've talked about. But I wasn't there when the ACA happened. What I did instead was I sat on the Insurance Exchange Board for four years, and I said, this alone is not gonna be enough. A website was not the end goal. We have to figure out how we layer this with additional coverage that our city and state can provide, and that we do it in a way that reflects our community values. I will be pushing for us to evaluate whether or not we get enough housing in each of these upzones, but the reason I don't wanna go back to the drawing board is, we will lose time, and we don't have time to waste right now in terms of creating affordable housing. I didn't sit there and agree with the Seattle Times when they said, hey, there's enough housing in the city. I was like, that's not the experience, that's not my lived experience, that's not the community that I talked to. In fact, folks who are getting the knocks on the door, the property owners, they're getting knocks on their door because there is not enough housing, the costs of those properties are skyrocketing because we haven't created enough housing. So we don't see eye to eye on this, but I think it's important to be honest about why, and honest about the intention. My intention is not because I'm in collusion with somebody, it's because I wanna actually create the housing that our community needs. And, you know, change and development don't necessarily have to equal bad things if our community is driving what that looks like. If our community figures out what we want out of the conversation, then we can get what we need. That's what we see in Africa Town, in the Central District, that's what I'm pushing for, at the Beacon Hill, Pacman Tower, that is what we need to be pushing for so that we can create more affordable housing, like the one that's just right over here on the corner. I've forgotten the name of it. By the retirement center, with the community center, with affordable housing, limited equity options in terms of ownership. I just think that there's a way to do this that doesn't have to say, no, we gotta go back to the drawing board, we need to say, that wasn't enough, how do we layer it with additional ideas? And really apologize, because I'm gonna say that I would be taken off from here at nine to pick up somebody, but I'm happy to say for, like, last comments or clarification.
John, do you have a close?
Thanks for having me. No, I could go longer, I mean, Teresa's in a rush. I'll just say, yeah, you know, I think we have a lot of big decisions to make as a city. I think that those decisions should be grounded in community, grounded in neighborhoods. You can look at my track record, I mean, I've been a community organizer here, fighting against the forces of displacement and fighting against these same interests. I encourage you to read the endorsements at The Stranger, Seattle Times, The Weekly, and you can make your own decisions about where I stand on these issues, I've been very consistent. My lens is about affordability, my lens is about addressing displacement, it's about making sure that growth pays for growth. Those are the central values to my campaign. And, you know, when we ran in the primary, we were outspent 3 to 1, but we got through. And we'll get outspent probably 6 to 1 this time around. But that's okay, that's what you do if you fight for your community and you believe in it. You go up against those odds. So I'd love to have your vote, I'd love to have your support, so that we can see that vision, you know, come to fruition. So thank you for your time.
I would, I would love to go for like three more hours, this has been so-
If you haven't had enough, you can come to the emergency hall tomorrow night.
True, that's great.